I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask you all to join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a ready and justice
And I'm also at this moment going to ask you to join with me in just a moment, to take some time out of our public meeting for a moment of silence. We all remember Marie Righiani who was with us for many years, in fact thirty-three years at Mannamet Elementary School and South Elementary School. Marie passed in late November. And certainly in memory of Marie and in respect for her family at their time of need, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. And now, we have a really, really nice presentation to make. Dr. Majestas.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I am honored tonight to recognize one of our students from Plymouth Community Intermediate School who was the recipient of the John F. Kennedy Centennial Poetry Contest. She was actually selected as the middle school runner-up. And I have a copy of her work with me this evening, in her poem, and brings back a lot of thought in my mind. John F. Kennedy died on September twenty-second of nineteen sixty-three, and I was actually born nine days before that. And I remember my mom and dad saved newspaper clippings from his passing. And I remember going back, every time I go home, I see those clippings because they meant so much to my family. When I look at the poem that Justine has written, I think it's very poignant. I think it is something that is a well-done piece of work. And tonight, the school committee is here to recognize Justine for her fine work. And this poetry contest was sponsored by the Massachusetts Poetry and the JFK Library Foundation. So I would like to call up Justine up. Justine Quinonola, could you please come up? And we'll have a certificate for you to recognize your fine work.
She almost went spastic.
So, Dr. Sorenson, I just want to thank you for recognizing Justine and allowing some time tonight to recognize the fine work of our children here in the Plymouth School. So, thank you so much.
And Justine, we all have a copy of your writing. Thank you very much. It's excellent. So at this moment, I'm going to open and declare a public hearing on our proposed fiscal nineteen budget. So at this moment, I will declare the public hearing open, which means, is there anybody here who would like to speak to the committee relative to the fiscal nineteen operating Seeing nobody here to speak to that, I will then officially declare the public hearing closed and move on to our next agenda item, which is the school committee adaptation of the fiscal nineteen budget. Dr. Majestas.
Yes, tonight, this is an opportunity for us to answer any questions the committee may have. Just that you know, the board of selectmen will be listening to the budget from the town side tomorrow. This budget will be, you know, adopted and passed along and inserted into the town's budget. But right now, we are prepared to move forward depending on what the school committee has tonight for action. So, Dr. Sorenson, if there are any questions of the committee based on the budget process or any other questions based on last school committee meeting, school committee's meeting, we would be more than willing to entertain any questions that you may have, the board may have.
Thank you, and thank you for having all of your principals and coordinators here and project managers. Committee members with questions relative to the budget. Thank you. Mr. Bagley.
Were we going to make an adjustment to the final amount?
No, I think that will probably take place after the town has the opportunity to present their budget and understand where they are with the negotiations.
Okay.
So we would probably come back with an adjustment.
Okay.
Any other questions? This is an action item. Mr. Bagley.
I'll make a motion to accept the budget as presented.
Thank you, seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Is there a question to the motion? Okay, then we'll take the vote.
My thing went out. I don't want to have to join. Oh, okay. Sorry.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Now, the next item is community participation. Is there anybody attending to tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to address the committee? Okay, seeing no hands then. The next item on our agenda is our student representatives. We shall start with North.
So, we have our holiday recess coming up on Friday. We have a half-day. Last week, we had our winter concerts, and they took place in the pack on December twelfth and thirteenth. It was a free concert, and the performances were concert band and orchestra and chorus. There was a turnout of over six hundred guests. And for Skills USA, our students worked together to promote the mitten tree. And to decorate the tree, students and staff were asked to bring in hats, scarves, mittens, gloves, and socks. And all of the items will be donated to the Plymouth area Coalition for the Homeless. And our progress reports came out, and parents are encouraged to look at their students' Aspen accounts to see their progress. And for those students who were failing any subject on Friday, December fifteenth, were sent home a letter. Many groups within our school community were working together to raise money for the Giving Tree. The combined money raised for the Giving Tree will go towards gift cards and are given directly to families in the Plymouth North High School community. The efforts of the students in these clubs are very much appreciated. So for our midterms, the mid-year exam will begin Friday, January twelfth, and will continue through Friday, January nineteenth. And the nineteenth will be a half-day of school. Our winter sports are in full swing. Check out many sporting events and join us as we cheer on our school. On Thursday, January twenty-first, one hundred seniors and juniors will be given the opportunity to become CPR certified. Students were able to sign up for one of two time slots, and the classes will be held on-site. We would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the families that have completed the NEASC Family Survey. If you haven't had the opportunity to take the survey, we encourage all families to take time to fill it out before the end of the month and have your voice heard. The information was sent home with each student and can also be found on our website. We would like to wish all our families a safe and happy holiday season.
Thank you. And now, South.
Good afternoon. I first would like to apologize for my voice, or lack thereof, because I'm just coming off a cold. But I'd like to open by saying that Plymouth South High School hosted two separate honor roll breakfasts for grades nine and ten, and then grades eleven and twelve. Our guest speakers included students from the school, Olivia Morrow, who addressed the freshmen and sophomores, and then Plymouth South Middle School Assistant Principal, and alum, Joe Murphy. Plymouth South High School hosted a fantastic winter a cappella performance, as well with our orchestra and band concert in our new Performing Arts Center. The a cappella concert featured both North and South's group, and also with a private group from Boston. National Honor Society applications are due this Friday, and our induction ceremony will be held on January twenty-fifth. The National Honor Society students also ran a very successful blood drive this past month with the Massachusetts Red Cross. Over thirty-five donors joined us for a very worthy cause. And Thanksgiving brought a lot of smiles at many of our elementary schools, as our dance team, football, and cheer seniors read stories to them in their classrooms and brought smiles to everybody else with the big Thanksgiving Day when. We also would like to give a shout-out to the ladies for their wonderful halftime performances. Our winter sports also began on November twenty-seventh, and our games have started with home openers last week for girls' ice hockey and basketball, along with wrestling. Our boys will open up with baseball Tuesday and hockey Wednesday. The Plymouth North versus Plymouth South basketball game will take place this Friday, excuse me. Our girls' varsity at four o'clock and boys' varsity at six. Our Cosmos seniors took first place and third place in this year's avant-garde competition versus Southeastern Technical High School. Our wrestling and many advisory classes collected toys for underprivileged youth this holiday season. Many were delivered today to their respective agencies. And our staff community fundraisers for underprivileged students raised over a thousand dollars in gift cards that will be distributed to families in the community by our guidance counselors. The class of 2021 would also like to invite everybody to our school for our community book fair taking place during K Block, starting Monday, twelve eighteen, and then lasting through Thursday, December twenty-first. Books will be available for purchase for one dollar. We have all kinds of books, and we encourage everybody to come. It will make great families gifts and friend gifts as well.
Those are two very good reports. It must take you guys quite a while to put all that together. And we appreciate it, because otherwise, we wouldn't get all that. So, thank you very much.
No problem.
Moving down to old business, is there any old business from the committee or central office?
I have a few items to report on, and maybe, I don't know if some of these will ever be closed, but maybe we can close some of them. Go down to item twenty sixteen point five. We have Plymouth North High School sound system. This was actually off of old business, but it came back on old business, because we did have a situation over at North with the sound system. This is an update, it is not complete yet, but had a conversation with Principal McSweeney, and the sound system is going to be repaired and set up so that it's a lot easier for us to manage. And that upgrade will take place in the next few months. So that is in play, and we're going to make it so it's a lot easier to maneuver and a lot less control from the general area, people that come into that area to be able to tweak the system. So that will be adjusted, and we'll use some building use money to be able to make those adjustments to the sound system. And hopefully, this will one day come off the old business list, because I think since North opened, it's been on there. Recycling, the recycling piece is still on there. That's twenty sixteen dot oh seven. That is something that we are still working on. And again, there's some, it's a town and school collaboration that is really behind trying to get all this to work, and that has really stalled and is not going anywhere quickly. So that's something that we will continue to look at.
Dr. Bagley.
Why is it stalled?
Well, right now, we've had several conversations about the responsibility of different parties to actually remove recycling from campuses. So it's a matter of how recycling will get from the classrooms into recycling containers, and then once it's in recycling containers outside the building, who's going to actually pick it up? So that is a labor issue, and that's something that needs to be reviewed. And I think there needs to be some level of discussion at a higher level with the town as to how that can actually be accomplished. So it is a labor situation as we review this.
As we noted. Yeah. So are we going to make it part of our negotiations, though?
You know, it can be put on the list of items for negotiation, Mr. Bagley, and we can see how that works through the process.
Right, because that's how we had said we were going to be doing.
Yep.
I just don't want to see it slip through our fingers again.
Yep. And we have not had the opportunity to engage in negotiations yet because of the insurance P E C C agreement that we're working through. So we're, once we get the insurance piece, we can start negotiations, which we hope to start in February, January, hopefully. That's the goal. So we'll see how things go with that.
Okay.
Other updates. See if we can go to. I think the National School Board Association Conference twenty eighteen. I think that has been resolved, correct? We have members going to that? So that has been addressed. And then with the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, we did send a letter to the CPAC identifying the position of the school committee. And that letter was sent, so at this point, I'm not sure if that needs to be closed or for the discussion needs to take place on that. But the latest correspondence to the CPAC was that a member would attend meetings, would not be assigned, but would go to meetings, would attend with our Special Education Director, who attends every meeting. So we do have a representative there. Dr. Rogers goes to all CPAC meetings, and again, encourage school committee members to attend meetings when they're available. So with that, I think those are the ones that we can actually report on tonight.
So we can close the last two, right?
Yes.
And can we close the dress code concerns and the graduation attire one? It seems like there's really no follow-up there.
Well, it was.
It's like it's noted, it's in the record, but there's no action, right?
Yeah, the graduation attire was addressed, and dress code concerns have also been addressed. So those can be closed out as well.
I think the graduation attire one, Ms. Trusselli brought up, with wearing military sashes, and I think we've worked that out.
Absolutely.
And I believe we will be, we passed over the health curriculum, but I think we will be seeing that in the next budget round, I would think. So that'll be back before us.
Yes, Dr. Sorenson, the health curriculum is our next curriculum focus moving forward and revision, and also implementation of programming. So we're looking at a change for the twenty nineteen budget. So that's what we'll be looking forward to, and that's when we see those modifications monetarily for support.
So that will stay on?
Yes.
That will stay on this list?
Yes.
Any other discussion about these items?
The kindergarten registration paperwork one, I think you also closed that one. You completed that one, I believe. Because we talked about the summer retreat, remember?
Yeah, we did have our data office send home information for parents so they could register over the summer. That's correct. That's another one that can be closed.
We can close that one as well.
We cleaned the list up.
Ness, did you get all those?
I did.
Great. Thank you.
Hate having them dangling out there.
No, I think it's good that we review them periodically. Okay. Can we move on to new business now? Committee members with new business. Ms. Badger?
It's kind of an old business, and I know I've already talked to Dr. Majestas about it. And I know, I believe, Dr. Sorenson, you brought it up about another school. I was driving by South Elementary School at like five o'clock in the morning, and the lights are going, and they're flashing at seven, they're flashing. I don't know if they're on constantly, because obviously, I don't drive by it every hour. But I know that we had some, I know that the schools are, they're still flashing at the noon time for kindergarten or dismissal, but now we don't even need them. So I just want to make sure we get that on the list, so we get those lights taken care of.
We have worked with the town on a time schedule for our schools that have flashing lights.
Perfect.
And that's, the DPW department has the ability to change those. And I believe part of the problem that we have is during, you know, time change areas, you know, fall and spring, we do have a lag or, you know, issue with that. So those are being worked on, and we talked about it on Friday with the principals regarding schools and times. But hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll see that would be taken care of.
Perfect. Thank you.
And of course, I don't know why they keep reverting back to the half-day flashing, but that's something that we cleared out two years ago.
It's funny. It's random, I think.
Yeah. And I don't know the technology behind it, so I don't know how it's set and how it's...
Anything else under new business? I just want to tell the committee that we have our Saturday morning meeting, which will be that first Saturday in February, it's the third. And I have invited the chairman of the Board of Selectmen and Sheila to come to our meeting, because we will be discussing Shishi Kahama at that meeting. And I think it's important that we all get together. That's be one of our agenda items. That'll be at nine o'clock, and there'll be other agenda items as well. Reports and proposals from Superintendent Dr. Majestas.
Yesterday night, I have a number of items to report on. I'll start with the calendar adjustments, because I know some of you have your calendars out. We did discuss the Federal Furnace Tour was going to be January eleventh, but we do have a time. That'll be January eleventh from eight forty-five to nine thirty. So that will be the walkthrough with school committee, and we'll have our video crew there to kind of walk through and have an opportunity to see how things are going within the schools. So that'll be January eleventh from eight forty-five to nine thirty.
At Federal Furnace.
Federal Furnace Elementary. Okay?
Can't make those.
In line with our budget presentations from tonight forward, we will be continuing to do budget presentations at all schools. So I will be providing a very similar presentation at every single school in the district to staff, so they have an idea where our budget is. We do it thirteen times, and it's a good time to get into schools and explain exactly where we are within our budget process. Just to give the school committee an update, we have moved through the first round of the Plymouth North High School principal search, and is moving forward. And the finalists will be interviewed after the holidays. So that was a well-run opportunity by Mrs. Frye, and it was a very busy day of interviewing for our committee. I had the opportunity last week to teach in two schools. I am beginning my teaching across the town of Plymouth. I taught music at Mannamet Elementary, and I taught art at West Elementary. And it was Thursday where I taught art, and I was still scrubbing tempera paint off my hands on Saturday. But I'm telling you what, it was such an incredible experience. It's been twenty-three years since I've been in the classroom. And to see the enthusiasm of the children, the preparedness of the teachers, you know, it was challenging for the first few minutes. But once, you know, it's what I really love, and it was really a great opportunity to kind of see how kids are doing. And I told the teachers, get me started and just go away, and they let me fly on my own. So I felt really good about my teaching from years ago, so.
From what I hear, one of those students really challenged you.
Yeah, a couple of them did. Yeah, but it was, you know what? I think it's a great opportunity for me to see how our students are responding to our teachers and also the challenges that we have in the classroom, because there are challenges. And it's been an enlightening opportunity for me. And I have eleven more schools to go, so I'll keep on giving you updates. And, you know, I have a great deal of respect for our elementary special area teachers, because, you know, there's a group of kids come into class, you teach with them, you teach them for an hour, and there's another group waiting at the door. So you get rid of one class, and another class comes in, and it's that way for three, four hours at a time. So you don't drink anything. I can tell you that right now, I'm learning. And you just teach, you know? So it's very enjoyable for me.
It'd be enjoyable, yeah.
As one of our students said, this Friday is a half-day. And the last thing I have to report on tonight, about four years ago, I was in a National School Board Conference, and I had the opportunity to hear a presentation from Life Touch. And I know Mrs. Hunt is familiar with this program. And it's very, very inspiring. And I actually submitted an application, and I was selected to do the Memory Mission, which is a Life Touch Memory Mission with administrators, National School Board members, PTA, National President, to go to the Dominican Republic in January and build a cafeteria for a school. So Life Touch is sponsoring the whole event, and there'll be press releases that will be out in January that will be highlighting the opportunity. And I, you know, I'm a person that really believes about, you know, give before you get. And hopefully, the students of Plymouth and our teachers can actually have an opportunity to see their superintendent helping people. And hopefully, that will impact them a little bit. So I'll be with forty individuals, twenty educators from around Canada and the United States. I will be representing Region Five. I'm the only educator from Region Five, but there's people from, you know, Maryland, Virginia, Tennessee, Kansas, Alberta, Ontario, Minnesota, Connecticut. Actually, there isn't anyone from Connecticut on this trip.
The National PTA president's from Connecticut. He's not going?
Yeah, no. The National PTA have, the vice president, president of the Montana PTA is going.
Oh.
Past president of the NSBA is going, but the president of the National PTA is not attending. But it is something that I hope has impact for us here in our district, but I do hope it has impact on me and what I do in the future here in Plymouth. I'm going to pass around a book. The Memory Mission has been going on for eleven years, and this book is kind of a time capsule of the last five or six years, so you can get an idea of what the Memory Mission is and what its impact is on education. So I just wanted you to get an idea of what I'm in for. But I was absolutely surprised to be selected, and I know Ms. Dargy found out before I did. And on our Monday meeting, they surprised me when they called into my office, and they, all my staff was sitting there watching me take this phone call, but...
Congratulations. That's fantastic.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And there'll be one day that I'm going to be on Facebook Live, and I'm going to encourage our, you know, I can dialogue with students, but there's very limited internet access where I'm going to be. But my day scheduled for Facebook Live is on January nineteenth at nine a.m. So I'll send that around to our schools, and I'll be able to communicate with our kids and anyone who would like to ask questions on what's happening and how this opportunity is progressing. Okay? Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Retirements.
Yes, we have three retirements tonight. Christina Pratt, physical education teacher from Federal Furnace after thirty-four years. Nancy Brown, project growth job coach after twenty-seven years of service at Plymouth North High School. And Gary Doobie, who's a custodian after thirteen years of service at West Elementary School.
Ms. Hunt?
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, we wish these individuals good luck on their retirement and a happy future.
Correspondents, Mr. Morgan.
All right, we got three correspondents for this evening. First, a letter from Sandy Hook Promise Foundation to PCIS for the generous donation of two hundred and fifty dollars that was raised through their Hat Day fundraiser during Say Something Week, and a matching contribution by the PCIS seventh grade... seventh grade senators. The next correspondence is a letter from the School Business Minister, Gary Cosson, to the First Student Bus Company commending the local staff, including the location manager, Joel Kaufman, and dispatcher Tracy Donahue, for their tremendous support in the recent kidnapping, along with the student's bus driver, Christine Bosworth, who demonstrated genuine concern and dedication. Last correspondence is, is from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges to Plymouth South High School Principal relative to the school's special progress report. The continued NEAS accreditation and removal from the mourning status for the Standard and Community Resources for Learning. The NEAS letter commended the district and the community for its commitment to all the students of Plymouth through completion and occupancy of the new Plymouth South High School.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now the, the next item is discussion about the exchange program with China, and then, and then the following agenda item would be a discussion about a possible field trip to China. So, we'll start with Dr. Maestis on the, on the first one, eight point one.
Yes, we have a, a brief presentation to show you. We have some pictures to kind of show you about our, our, our trip, and what I wanted to do tonight is just kind of give you an idea of what we experienced, Dr. Sorenson and I, and I'd like to thank Peter McGovern and Alan Gouther here tonight to support us. And Alan is the CEO of Massachusetts Education International, and Peter's...
Before we begin, I will invite Peter and Alan to the table, please. Please join us. And while you come up, I will say, "Huan shang heo, bui neng gong wei." I hope I said "Good evening and thanks for coming."
Yeah.
Or something like that.
So, we had the opportunity to travel to, to China, and this was a, an experience that I think Dr. Sorenson and I would say, for me, it was a twice-in-a-lifetime trip. Dr. Sorenson, I think it was a time of, of, of his life was to travel to China, but it was way more than, than the long flight. It was way more than having the opportunity to see China. It was a, an opportunity to really engage with education, with educators in China, and have the opportunity to really find out the interests of the schools and what they really would like to do in partnership with the Plymouth Public Schools. So, tonight I have a few slides to show you some of the information, and I just want to just start off with the pictorial overview of the visit, the schools that we visited, and, and maybe Alan and Peter can help me out with the schools and, and the different prefectures and the, you know, it's, we, we got to Beijing, and Beijing is so big. And we were moving from place to place, and I, I can't keep track of it all, but it is, it is an amazing city, and it's, it's very, very large, and we, we, we did a lot of traveling. We also did a presentation at Beijing Normal University, which was very engaging, and we'll talk about that a little bit. We'll talk about educational partnerships, global studies, and the reciprocal partnership benefits for, for Plymouth and also for China, and then we'll talk a little bit about our, our future plans. So, let's take a look at some of the pictures that we took, and, and of course, these are just a, a few of the pictures. The, the photo, let me go back here once. The, the photo on the upper left-hand corner is a, a very typical meeting that we engaged in, and we, we actually went to, to, every school that we went to, they had a conference room that looked just like this, and much nicer than any conference rooms that we have here. But they, they seemed to be prepared to have meetings like this, and it was common for us to walk into this conference room, and there'll be a banner, you know, "Welcome to, Welcome Plymouth Public Schools to their school," and extremely, extremely welcoming. And I, I can tell you that there was a lot of work behind the scenes to set all of these meetings up. The second photo is, we had a walking tour of a brand-new high school in the city, and it was, it's going to open up soon, and we had a very engaging conversation about the possibility of our students visiting, and also students from this school traveling and studying here. The football field was similar to our turf field, and they had a, an eight-lane track, very similar to our track. It seemed to be longer than, than our track, but I believe a mile, still a mile. But it was very, very well-done, and when we left, I said that we would get them a flag so that they could, when they opened their school, that we would, hopefully our flag would fly when, when they did open the school. And so, we do have a flag that's gonna be, we actually thought we had a couple of extra flags here, but we are out, so we had, we had one ordered, so. And then the picture to the right is, had the opportunity to go into a classroom, and this was an English class, and the students were allowed to ask questions, but this classroom had about fifty students in it, and that seems to be about forty-five, fifty students, very typical. So, we had students ask us questions in English. The students had felt very confident and comfortable in their English, asked us the questions, and it was, it was a, a great opportunity to get into classrooms, and I think that's one thing Dr. Sorenson and I really wanted to do, was actually get to, to have an opportunity to be around kids. At this particular school, I had the opportunity to eat lunch in the student cafeteria, and, and, you know, we got the school lunch, and I thought it was fabulous. I, I enjoyed it quite a bit. Matter of fact, you'll hear a little bit more about the food in, in a while, but we, we, the Chinese dishes, there are, are way more than I can imagine, hundreds of dishes that we, that we sampled. So, the upper left-hand corner, you'll notice a picture of, of a round table. Well, that round table, the center of it actually is a lazy Susan, and it's, it, it spins. So, you, you know, you put on a, I don't know, twenty, thirty different entrees in a meal, and you spin it, and you grab, you know, with your chopsticks what you want. And I'll tell you, every day, no matter how much we said we've had enough, the food kept coming out, and no matter what Alan said, they kept bringing food out. But I, I tell you that the hospitality, it was tremendous. The quality of food, every, every venue we went to, every school, every cafeteria, the, the food was really, really, really well-done. The picture right below in the middle of the three, this is where Dr. Sorenson and I presented at Beijing Normal University. And we agreed to present, and Dr. Campbell helped put together a presentation on the American education system, and, and we presented that, and it seemed that they were a lot more interested in asking questions, Dr. Sorenson and I. So, we did have a question and answer session after, that we were at Beijing Normal University for three hours, and I think we talked for about, I mean, we were active for about two and a half of those three hours. So, it was about two-hundred-and-fifty educators and principals from around the area that came to listen to Dr. Sorenson speak. So, it was, it was pretty engaging.
One, one of the things that I, I think I found out from that was that, that education in, in China has been an exchange of information. The teacher has the information, they give it to the student, the student memorizes it and gives it back. What China is realizing is that there's a lot more to education than just regurgitating information. So, now they want their students to think critically. They want their students to make assessments, to, to use common sense, so they know that we teach that well. And that's the sorts of questions they asked us. How do we get our students to, so if you take their work ethic and our educational program and put it together, you're gonna have quite an educational system, and so that's what I think is going on here.
There's a great deal of interest in the area of creativity, a great deal of interest in personalization, and those are some of the questions that they asked at this lecture that we, we were at. And then, when we got out of the lecture, it must be customary for everyone to take pictures with the guests, with guests, because we had...
You saved us.
Yeah.
If we would, still be standing there.
[laughing] Taking pictures. But it was, we, we felt probably a little, like honored guests for the time that we were there. And I was at Beijing Normal University, two thousand and seven, and China's changed dramatically in ten years, and the attitude on education has changed, and I, I think we felt a lot of that when we were at this lecture. And then the picture, the, the large picture to the right is a very typical meeting that we would go to with the principal, or the building leader, or the educational leader, and just talk about education, and talk about plans for education. We visited nine different schools, and Dr. Sorenson and I split up on a couple of days just to be able to cover the schools that we had to get to. Of course, there's travel in between, so it was pretty engaging. So, the school visits that we, we went to, nine schools, we met with school officials, we toured the schools, and, and met students, which was, I, I enjoyed that the most. We talked about partnership opportunities. I think a lot of the schools that we visited really wanted to have a face-to-face conversation with us about what we value and what we really believe about education. I really, I, I left with these meetings feeling that they needed a, a level of trust to know that we would, if their students would come here, that we would, we would treat them like our students, and we would accept them, and we would look at what their educational background is in China, how we would translate that into an American course, which is something that we've done. So, they had a lot of questions on the administrative side, on the college side, if the kids, if the kids came here, you know, what that, what does that experience look like, and also, what does their college experience look like when, when they get out, and what, what that application process would look like. So, and one of the things that we found very interesting was unexpected, that the, the students were really excited to discuss the American education system, especially college. I think a lot of them, we asked them, "Well, where do you want to go to school?" And I think everyone in here would know the answer.
MIT.
They want a MIT or Harvard.
If you go to MIT, it's all Chinese.
Yeah. And so, that's, that's what they, they would love to attend those universities. And we said, "Well, so does every, [laughing] so does many, many Americans want to do that as well." So, and this is more of, of pictures, you know, demonstrating exactly the kind of meetings that we had. And we, we were in several of these meetings, and I think there were probably more photographers in the meetings than there were guests at the, around the table. So, I'm sure there are pictures around China of our team meeting, and I'm sure there's news about Plymouth Public Schools in China and what our, our school looks like, and exactly what we are doing here in, in Plymouth. I, I think the word is out about the Plymouth Public Schools. Beijing Normal University, I, I just want to talk about this briefly, and you notice on the bottom-right photo, that, that is a banner that, when we pulled in, there was a banner of, of Dr. Sorenson and myself, and we have no idea what the, what the words were.
What they said about us.
But we, it must have been good, because people showed up.
[laughing].
But if we take a look at the top questions that they had when we did this opportunity for discussion, I think the very first question they asked is, "How do we deal with bullying and harassment in schools?" And, and, you know, it's, it's, no matter where you're on, are around the world, it's, it's what we deal with. And so, we talked a little bit about, you know, the mandated reporting that happens here in the United, in Massachusetts, and, and the kind of awareness that we've had because of, of situations that have happened. Another top question was personalization and really connecting, and changing that somewhat relationship from student to teacher, and teacher to student. How does that, how does that look like, and how does that work? And another one was really the admission into American universities, and how does that all take shape? So, the picture in the middle, top middle, is the lecture hall that we were in, and I, I would say it's pretty full. Two-hundred-and-fifty people were there to listen to, to what we had to say, and, but I thought it was well-done, well-attended, and it was very worthwhile for us to attend that and, and give a perspective. And Dr. Campbell's presentation, I hope we did it justice, but we did present it. But, and educational partnerships, I think, you know, this is really where we are here. I mean, we have, we've, are in our, this is what we are looking at, you know, moving forward with our educational partnership. We, we have students here in Plymouth now. We have four students studying at South. Right now, our students are coming here for one year, and they will, they prepare for graduation while fulfilling their MCAS requirement. And one of the things that we did realize in, in China is that it would be worthwhile if students that were selected to come to the United States, come to Plymouth to study, would have some prerequisites on coursework prior to coming. That can help them to succeed when they have to pass MCAS. In order for a student from China or any other country on an F-one visa to graduate, they have to receive and pass their MCAS exams. So, that, that's something that they are, our students now are diligently working to, you know, go through that process. And what we were really compelled to do was take a look at how we can actually prepare and develop some coursework in China for students that are selected. Maybe they get selected when they're sophomores, and, and their junior year they prepare, and then the senior year they come. One of the things that Alan and Peter and Jim and I have had conversations about is the possibility of lobbying to actually have students study here for two years, because that would actually help their preparedness in a significant level. And the premise is really coming from the idea where if you're in a private school in Massachusetts, you're allowed to study for two years. But if you come to a public school in Massachusetts, you can only get a visa for one year. So, that's one thing that we're gonna look into about the possibility for students to engage in interior education, because it'll, it'll enhance their education here quite a bit, and it'll, it'll make that transition that much easier for them to actually get through the state assessments. And students from Plymouth, we're looking at them, our students from Plymouth have an opportunity to, to study abroad and, and actually do a, a visit. So, we, we do have a presentation after this one that's really looking at how we can actually get our first group of students to, to actually go to China and visit some schools, and, and kind of get an idea of what it's like in the school system, and, you know, identify what a, a global economy looks like, a global environment looks like. And I think we've had the opportunity to engage with, with France, with Japan, with the Dominican Republic. We have our partnership in England. And one of the things that we, as a school district, in, in my opinion, need to start looking at is how do our students become aware of what China has to offer? The economy in China is, is incredible. The technology and the advancements of creativity are, are really advancing in China, and I think it's something that our students should be aware of, and our students should have the opportunity to actually, to engage in, in actually what this means for them. So, there is the opportunity for our students actually to understand what that means, and I think that we can develop some level of programming to support that, so that our students can actually travel, experience what that is. I think we'll start, you know, with a, a short opportunity, a week visit, and we can talk about that later, but that's something that we'd like to, to engage in. I might add that we, we have engaged with Massachusetts Education International, MEI, because they have a great deal of resources in China. They have support everywhere, every city we went to, there were representatives waiting for us from MEI, and they were able to help us navigate the cities, navigate the schools, talk to the people that we needed to. And we believe that our partnership with MEI is allowing us to actually create a great experience for the kids that come here, and also the possibility for our kids to, to travel to, to, to China. And, you know, the whole idea of global studies, I know we, we really wanted to, to focus in and, and, you know, on business, economy, culture, entrepreneurship, and, and actually, I, I'd like to offer, you know, down the road, Mandarin here in Plymouth, and I think it would be a, a great opportunity for our students to engage in that. And again, I think our, our guests here tonight have a lot of information and knowledge in actually providing these type of opportunities. So, I think it's a partnership that we are, are proud of, and, and we're excited to actually engage with them moving forward. But, you know, one of the things that, you know, Dr. Sorenson and I were talking about, about this last, about this last week, actually, earlier this week, and, you know, he said to me, you know, "I think the students from China are, are gonna, you know, gonna, gonna gain a lot by coming to the United States, coming to Plymouth, because they have a goal set in mind. They want to study, they want to gain proficiency in language, proficiency in technical writing, and, and understanding of how our assessments work, and actually admission into college." And, you know, one of the things that he said to me is, you know, "Our students have, they have a lot to gain as well." And one of the things that I shared a story with him, we had a get-together about a week and a half ago at my house for students from China and their host families, and we wanted to... And we wanted to just get everybody together for the holidays. And, um, one of our host families' daughter, um, was talking to me at the get-together, and she said, uh, um, it's been so wonderful to have, um, my, my guest sister in, in our home. She has helped me a great deal. I have ne- I have, um, never studied so hard and my grades are the best that they've ever been. So I think the influence of the students and the diligence that they have toward coursework and really understanding the, the, that education and the diligence you, you really, uh, have towards that is really important. And I think, um, our students are, are picking up on that, um, and that host family experience has been wonderful for our students. So, um, you know, so far, our experience with, with this has been, uh, outstanding. I can tell you, our trip to China was, um, was, I didn't really know what to expect. I know we had a really busy agenda, but I can tell you that it was extremely successful. It was extremely successful because we had the opportunity to meet with, uh, many educators throughout the areas that we visited. Uh, we had, uh, and we didn't meet with, um, you know, um, you know, people that were, weren't decision-makers. We, we met with people that were really running, uh, large school systems, uh, much larger than the Plymouth Public Schools, that had the ability to make some significant decisions and answer some really significant questions on, um, possible partnership and, and possible, uh, opportunities for our students to travel and, uh, also, um, students from those schools to come here in Plymouth. So, I kind of look at it almost like an interview. We interviewed them and they interviewed us, and I felt that we, um, were, were really engaged with, um, the possibility of what can happen between the cities that we visited and the schools that we were in and the Plymouth Public Schools. And there's, you know, there's this reciprocal benefit, and I did talk about this a little bit, you know, is, um, the Plymouth, uh, students from Plymouth can have opportunities to gain an understanding of China and the environment in China. And I can tell you, uh, in ten years, um, it has changed. It was, I went the year before the, uh, Beijing Olympics, and to see the difference between China then and now, it's almost like a hundred and eighty-degree difference from, um, the structures, the, the, the flow of traffic, the, the cars. Every single vehicle that was not an automobile was either a motorcycle, scooter, or a three-wheel vehicle, they were all electric, every single one of them. And I'm a car person, I, I'm always looking at machines, and, uh, you won't even hear them going down the road, they're just silent. We drove by a, um, auto shop, and the auto shop, I had, I saw four different scooters, all having their batteries changed. It was, you know, like we would take a car in for service, they go in and get an upgrade with the battery. But I can tell you that, uh, there's a lot to be learned. I think that agreement, that reciprocal agreement that we look at having with our, uh, our sister schools in, in China would, would be very advantageous for us. And I think we can learn from our students from China, and our students from China can learn from, from our students here. So, that's a true partnership, and, you know, like I said, um, I, you know, both, both students from China and from, from Plymouth can, can learn a new, a new language, you know? And I think that would be extremely exciting for us to be able to offer, uh, Mandarin, and I know, um, they tell me it's not hard to learn, um, but, uh, you know, they, they, you know, Jim, look at Jim.
Don't look at Jim.[837.85][837.88](laugh)
And then, and then the opportunities for, for students to study, uh, abroad and open those horizons, because it is a global environment, a global economy. When I look at, you know, I have a, a son graduating in May, and I, I look at the opportunities that are, are out there, uh, when a kid gets out of college, that, that are well beyond, uh, Massachusetts, they're well beyond the United States. And I, you know, how do we encourage our kids to take those leaps and those challenges? And I think, um, if the Plymouth Public Schools can engage in this, um, I think we will, we will suit our, our students, our students well. And then, um, you know, I think we, we talked about this, you know, that language proficiency is so, is so key, is so key. Uh, future plans, uh, we're looking at, uh, right now we have four students, and we're looking at, at, uh, enrolling twenty-plus students with, you know, dividing them up between North and South. And, uh, we do have the ability to offer, uh, F-one visas. Dr. Campbell and I were investigated by Homeland Security, um, and we, we, I don't say that too lightly, because we did have a visit from Homeland Security, they came in and looked at our schools, they questioned Dr. Campbell, uh, intensely. But we, we do have the ability through central office to, uh, offer V-one, uh, F-one visas, uh, and it, it is really a quick process, um, and it's a matter of, of us looking at the applications of students that would like to study here and how we vet those applications and, um, but I think that's something that we can work on moving forward. And I think a big piece for us is, is recruiting host families, because the host family relationship, as many of you know that have been engaged in host families, it's really, really key and central to the students really engaging in the community, engaging with, uh, a, a family that speaks English, and also having a connection from home to school. Which is, is, um, is worked for us in Plymouth for, for many, many years, and I, I know many of you have been involved with host families for over twenty years, and, um, and it's, and it's, it's, it, it works, and I think in Plymouth, it's been something.
I'm just gonna say something about the one-year, two-year thing, and then I want Alan and Peter to speak. The one-year, two-year thing is really critical, and we can prove it. We have a student in South, in North right now, who I know quite well. He came on a green card in eighth grade. Uh, he repeated his eighth grade when he got here, so we repeated eighth grade, that's when he learned the language, he then took ninth grade at North, and now is a tenth grader, he's in AP courses. So he didn't have the language two years ago, and he's taking AP courses as a sophomore. We need to get these kids here for more than one year, and we really have to push that, because it, it's so necessary, and I think that Alan and Peter would agree with that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Could you tell us a little bit about what, how you see the future of MEI and Plymouth?
Thank you. I think the, everything is exactly what you're saying. I think the slogan here, making the dreams come true, I think for Plymouth kids, when a many dream come true, probably can make their dream come true in China too. So right now, during the whole process right now, any impact needs certain scale. So right now, the Plymouth in our relationship, as Gary's saying, definitely is, we look at it really important, uh, our relationship. So my personal dreams in ten or fifteen years, if Plymouth High School, they produce certain students back to China, become somebody, or somebody can impact the whole country, in something like that, the dreams will come true from my side, has a possibility. I think right now is, um, for really basic elements, right now, China, uh, you and Gary experiences so many students in so many things, China, the whole attitude changing almost every year. They really look at the global, it's a part of their own reaching. They don't think something like only live in Beijing, live in Shanghai. One picture has a gentleman in charge of one point five million students, sitting in front of you, and he's willing to talk to the Plymouth as a town, to see, okay, what can we do together? Basically, he's a guy in charge, eight million people, and then Gary in charge sixty-seven thousand people, but he's willing to, okay, I would like to understand what Plymouth and us can do together, in terms of produce our kids or train your kids really become global citizen. So right now, what I see right now is, if we can make the two years for Plymouth, then more and more students coming here within ten years' time, if accumulating two thousand, one thousand something students, gotta be someone become somebody. Long-term wise, if United States and China, nothing gonna happen, no conflicts, need to rely on the young generation, understand each other, the communication need to open. So if nothing happen, I think the total dream come true is from our side, not only for the kids. So right now, it's on our whole team, our whole company is total commit to, okay, how do you unlock the opportunity, fill up the capacity here, and also train the kids come here, and then after certain years, they not only obtain the knowledge, how do you build their value system? How do we create the kids in love with Plymouth or in love with American system and in love with American education? I working for UMass for sixteen years, knowledge transfer right now is not really important, I don't think knowledge is too expensive. How do you get the kids get back to China, can carry flag, I'm UMass graduate, I'm UMass student, I'm proud of UMass. I think something that, that could be more important than only get diploma or get a degree from United States, something that the whole committee, everyone can do. The President Senate have a lot, went to China together last November, so see the same thing. The people touch with us, engage with us, fall in love with us, understand us, I think the value is more important, only get a diploma from us. So I think this is what our whole company look at. Long-term wise, we would like to work with Plymouth to, okay, more, uh, true partnership, we all the students together, not only we get a student, give it to you, no. Only student together means we are create resource to support the students. Certain, certain cultural piece or certain something relate with something beyond academic, we can help. Uh, I think personally, I think I do have certain reputation in China, because I'm educated by myself, and on top of that, I do have a kids, one went to Harvard, one went to Duke. So in terms of student, Chinese, Chinese is a point of view, there's, well, it gotta be a good, (laugh) everything's saying for me, it's gotta be true. So this, when, when you and, uh, Gary went to China, so our team present to our partners, the people pay lots of attention, they understand Massachusetts, Plymouth, American town, Mayflower, (laugh) all the things, they all have good ideas.
Right, and we, and we truly believe that, you know, hey, everybody in this room is in this room because we're interested in educating children. They could be Chinese children, American children, Taiwanese children, art, we're interested in educating children. So, if Chinese students come here or our students go there, we all feel that's a very important part of their education.
Yes.
Everybody in this room practically.
I told you, in the honest speaking, uh, when, when the student come here, right now our four students leave our families, they consider their family, their family. Now, now they become part of a really, uh, organic piece of their whole family right now, the four kids right now here. They're so proud talking, oh, listen, my American mom, listen, American dad, they are not talking about names, they're talking about really, close, associate the family right now. So, certain numbers, so this is what we need scale.
Okay.
Has certain scale, the impact will become, will come for sure.
So, as Gary has it up, you know, there are, there is a future here, and I, and, and I think we, we feel that we need to work it. You know, we can't solve it all tonight, but we do need to work this. Back to you, Dr. Masters.
Yeah, I think one of the things that we, um, realize that, uh, there's a, a great level of, of interest in understanding the American methodology.
Yeah.
Of connection between teacher-student and student and self, um, realization, so that they feel, um, confident, that they feel the ability to be creative, take their knowledge, and, and I think that's what the China's, China education system is striving for that transition.
Yes.
And I would, I would, I would be, um, I'm, I'm predicting that in the next ten years, we will start to see that shift dramatically over time.
I totally agree with you, I think you, you're prediction hundred percent correct. China from the capacity use you feeling, feeling the, the, the stock of, of process right now is, could transform into semi-American style. Allow the kids more and more independent, more critical thinking, more listening that, but the problem still has resource issue, so the classroom right now is still too big.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
The classroom right now about fifty, sixty kids, the teacher has no opportunity to interact with students.
One, one of the things that I said at every presentation, I said, we expect our teachers to know their kids, we expect our administrators to know their kids. So if the child has a problem, our teachers will know that, uh, that doesn't happen in China, they don't know their kids.
No.
They can't, too many, yeah.
Yeah. And, and you brought up an interesting point when we were there, I mean, the, the, the country right now is not in a position to address that.
No.
And that's something that.
No, enough.
In not, yeah.
Resource issue.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and, and capacity. Uh, we, we did visit a brand-new school, and, um, that school I thought was fantastic, you know, um, but again, I, I, I think that was probably one of the more progressive schools in China, um, and it was a beautiful structure. But I, I see things changing, um, and again, I think for our purposes tonight, we wanted to come together to kind of give the committee an overview of actually what we did. It was exhausting, but it was, uh, extremely, extremely beneficial, and, and I want to thank Alan and, uh, Peter, um, and your team, Alan, for, for assembling everything for, for us, because it was extremely well-done, and we were, um, uh, we felt that it was, uh, an extremely well-done educational, uh, opportunity for us. I didn't mention anything about the food, but I believe Alan mentioned that, um, that a few different venues that I've been with Alan, that we probably had over a hundred and fifty different entrees.
More.
More than that.
Because, uh, the schedule, because we, we cut down to only seven days, it's quite intensive, I'm very sorry for, uh, Dr. Sorensen and Gary together, because honest speaking, they only about four hours free time only. Uh, we live in the hotel, only about two minutes away from West Lake, West Lake is the most famous place in the whole China, we didn't have time to take a look.
At night, we walked it at night.
Night before we leave, we walk around for half an hour, and then we just lost back the hotel. Because it's, we went to China, Beijing first, Beijing have one-day conference and able to school to visit and fly into Hangzhou, Hangzhou is eight million people, and then they pay lots of attention to department education, they had in charge one point five million people, again, there, we visit six school, uh, around there, and then we have to separate. Sorry, uh, Jim has to go with me.[1562.31][1562.34](laugh)
This sort of rolls into our next agenda item, which is the immersion program, so if you want us to kick that off, and then Peter will speak to it, I think.
Yes, so with, with this presentation, we, it really gets into the next piece, which is the China immersion program. And one of the things that I think MEI was really motivated to, to do and present to us is that, you know, we've had the opportunity for kids to come from China and, and, and study here in Plymouth, and, you know, is how do we look at that reciprocal opportunity for kids to actually go to China? So, um, we discussed this, uh, uh, about a month ago, and, and Peter put together a presentation, and MEI has a, a great deal of experience in, in this type of opportunity, and Peter has, has done this quite a bit. But what we're looking at doing is, um, in April, having a, um, a small group of students, uh, travel in combination with some students from Marlboro. They've been working in Marlboro, they have a center in Marlboro, um, and looking at doing a collaborative group with Plymouth and Marlboro high school students to go for a, a week during April vacation. And there's a sample agenda that Peter put together, and you can look at the dates, you know, um, it's, uh, very similar to the trips that we've done, um, with the exception that this is not with, uh, one of the vendors that we've used before, this is right with MEI, and, and, and Peter would manage it and make sure that everything's, is, is set up for us. But if you take a look at it, you can see the, uh, the tentative agenda, and you can, um, actually walk through that, and you'll notice that our students will be extremely busy, just like, uh, Dr. Sorensen and I. We had the opportunity to go to Tiananmen Square, uh, we didn't do a Tai, Tai Chi class, but that, that looks pretty interesting. They'll go to the Great Wall, which, the Great, I didn't put a picture of the Great Wall up, because I, I was in, I've been trying to collect pictures, and thank you, Peter, for sending me pictures, but, uh, we, we, um, you know, they, they'll get a, uh, a, a real opportunity to, to, to do some sightseeing, but also, um, uh, there's a Chinese dumpling cooking class, they'll actually go to, um, a school, and, and they'll visit a school, and actually kind of get an idea of what is, what, what the school's looks like. They'll, they'll be staying with, uh, with host families, uh, which is something that would be exciting for, for kids to engage and be part of a family. And, um, one of the things that I did, I did realize is, um, these, you know, these, these new phone apps that you talk into and you hit the button and they translate immediately, I think those have really come in handy for our students that travel abroad. But you can see the stamp, the, the sample, um, the sample agenda, so, um, so the details on the trip, uh, we would be working with, um, some staff members here in the district, a, a staff member to help and maybe go along and, and really help support, uh, this initiative. But it would be, uh, April thirteenth to the twenty-first, uh, it'll be, uh, you know, the China immersion trip, you can see the, the cities that we would travel to, uh, the students would travel to, um, and the, um, the trip would be about twenty-nine hundred dollars, and the students would be responsible for, for raising those funds. Keep in mind, this would be in April, and we're probably looking anywhere between four to six students, would be the number that we're looking at, uh, if more students had, had an interest, and, um, you know, we did see that that would be something that could be arranged, we would discuss that with MEI, but we're, we're only looking for four to six students, uh, and also partner with, uh, the Marlboro Public Schools, send some of their kids with us, and it would then create a collaborative group between Marlboro and Plymouth to go out and, and engage in this. So, I think this would be the inaugural, uh, trip, uh, to really test the waters on our student exchange, um, be the first time that, uh, students from the Plymouth Public Schools would travel to China, um, but it would be. But it would be, in my view, an opportunity for them to actually see what we're talking about.
Peter, anything you want to add to that?
No. Thank you again for having us, and excuse my voice, I'm also a bit sick like the student. Like Dr. Mises said, I think this is a really important first step. We've, we've started the, the first part by bringing some international students to Plymouth, which I think is a really important first step. But I think the, the 180, to make this 360, it's also really important to get our students, even if it's in small numbers to begin, to the People's Republic of China to, to, to see that firsthand. And so this short program is really designed to expose your students here in Plymouth to Chinese culture in a pretty holistic way. Like Dr. Mises mentioned, we have some, a lot of interactive experiential learning pieces, like a Tai Chi class and a dumpling cooking class, but then also several days in school, so they can kind of see where their, their classmates, Sebastian Vancey, Wendy and Freda, who were their Chinese students here at South this year, where they're coming from, their context, their reality, and help put into perspective their education here in Plymouth, so.
And if we had, you said four, five?
Four to six.
And if we had more?
Yeah, so, so I've, I've been speaking with Marlborough. Marlborough may or may not be able to go in April, but, but we can do this either way with Plymouth, and so even if it's a small group for the first year, that's, that's totally possible, yeah.
Now, but my question, suppose it was larger, suppose there were eight students?
Of course, of course. Yeah, I think, I mean, we can, we can accommodate up to, up to 30 without thinking, and, and probably even bigger, so.
Okay.
Everything in China is at a big scale, so they can do thousands.
To that point, we were in the airport, and we just kept going and going and going. We were at gate 500 or something, you know.
So, so, so this, this is unusual, I think, because we, this is a request for an over, for out-of-district, out-of-district field trip that's not coming from, from anybody in district. This is a little different, this is a little different presentation.
Coming, it's actually coming, it's coming from me. I'm actually, okay, I'm, I'm the one that is sponsoring the trip.
Yes.
Okay. But what we're, what we are doing, we, we'll have a teacher that will actually assume the role, and a teacher would have the opportunity to do that, or maybe even one of our coordinators that would be engaged in being part of this. And I think one of our goals is to really align some key staff members at each building that are actually going to be the liaisons for international studies in each building. So not only working with our students from China, but working with our students that come from other countries. So I think we, we would like to engage and formalize that a little bit more, but I think those people might be the ones that would be, you know, taking this on, Dr. Sorensen.
Okay.
I, I think what you just said is a good segue to the question that I had. I've said at nauseam at this table that I was an exchange student in high school, and my family, we always hosted for a year, for a month, for a week, all growing up, and it's life-changing. Gives you a different perspective on the world. I lived with a Muslim family in the 80s when 9/11 happened. Myself, my children, my family had a completely different outlook on things, and it, it makes your world a lot smaller. And I know Ms. Burgess can speak to this as well, but when I was in high school, I went to Plymouth Schools, it, we had an international club. We, all I wanted to do my senior year was be an exchange student. I knew lots of kids that went away for a year as exchange students, and I don't hear about that as much now. I don't know why, or if it's Plymouth, or if I'm just out of the loop and I don't hear those conversations.
I haven't been doing it, and I was the one.
That's right.
Well, you're not the only person that does it.
Thirty-something years.
I actually reported to her when I was younger, and
Actually, she, yeah, she came to, she came, yeah, you were for a different program, but she went over to my house and
Yeah.
joined our students from our program.
When I was in high school.
I was very inclusive of everybody.
But I would love, love, love to see that come back. And like I said, we had, it was the, at the time, I went through AFS, and we had an AFS club in the high school that was very active, and we did things on the weekends together with the foreign students, and we had, I think I graduated with maybe five or six students that lived with us for the year. I hosted a girl who graduated in 1986 from Plymouth that lived with my family. I spent my honeymoon with her family, like, we've just, it's just such an amazing, and I can't stress enough for host families and students to take every opportunity, and this was 35 years ago, so, to take every opportunity that they can to do, to do something like this. And so, and I will always support it.
Okay, Ms. Burgess.
It's, it's really good. I've, I've hosted 68 of them, sometimes more than one, one in a year. But I also placed them in other people's houses throughout the region. So sometimes I had up to 30 students in the area, but I was the one that if there was any issues or anything, I had to be the solver, too. But whatever, it's, it's a great experience, you become close to your family. I'm on Facebook with more than two-thirds of the students that I've hosted, and some that I've placed, or if they had problems, and I, I would, I helped them, then they're close to me, too. So even, even last year, I, I went on a cruise from Chile up the west coast of South America and through the Panama Canal, and I went, I had five days for a student that I'd had 35 years ago, and stayed with her. It's the first time I'd met the kids, the husband and she had been here, but I'd never met the kids, so we stayed with them first, and then they drove us to the ship. But, so I, I've been visiting them worldwide, but they're coming back. My Japanese girl's calling me, one of them, in the morning, she's trying to get me online. The line is the name of the free, free app on your phone. But anyhow, so she, she wants to come back. She was just here, what, three years ago with her daughter, she wants to come back with her son, is what it is. But anyway, it, it's so good, and it's so close, and the relationships building is wonderful. And I, I can't, I can't say enough about the host family, the host family.
Any, any, any final words before we take a, take a motion? Any final, any final words from anybody? So this is an action item. Mr. Bagley.
I'll make the motion that we support the program.
And seconded by Mrs. Burgess, we have a motion to, to approve the China immersion program. Seconded by Mrs. Burgess, does anybody have a question on the motion? No questions, they'll take the vote then? And that's unanimous, so that will happen. Thank you very much, Alan and Peter.
Thank you very much.
How do you say, chiché?
Those are Chinese.
Thank you for coming tonight.
In terms of food, I think Gary touched about over 200-something dishes, because seven days, each dinner, each dinner about 30, so seven times, 30 is 210.
Yeah.
No including lunch.
Two-ten. Do you get it? That means a lot to me.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You will. You feel better?
Can I go?
Okay. I knew that was coming. All right. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, please. Thank you very much.
It would be nice.
He wouldn't do that.
All right, we're back in session, and we have some job descriptions to work on. Ms. Frye.
Yes, as you know, we've been working on job descriptions, and we're trying to finish out our paraeducators. And I believe there are eight tonight, and the first two are the only ones that existed before. These are all aligned with our contract, and as I've said, we're working with the union presidents at all the meetings with me. And the first two were very outdated, so we ended up rewriting the entire job description for the first two. I'll go through each one, but the final six, those never existed before, job descriptions, so we had to write them new. So there's some specific language, but the big pieces, the titles are all aligned with what's in the contract.
Okay, so we'll take them one at a time, then.
Okay.
So the first one is the bus monitor.
Yes.
Is there anything you want to add to it?
The only thing to know is this is something that's in the contract, but we don't have any employees currently in this position.
Where are they monitoring?
Yes, we've used, right, yeah, we used to have them, and we've kept it just in case a unique situation comes up with a child
Okay, yeah.
and their needs. But at this time, we do not have any in place, but I've worked with Mr. Costin on this. If the need were ever to arise, the job description would be there, so.
Anything, any committee members with any observations or questions on this one?
No.
I, I would, I would just suggest that number three says to ensure that students board and exit the bus in a safe and orderly fashion. Why wouldn't it say board, ride, and exit? Why just board and exit?
That's a good point. I'll put ride, it makes a really good point. We want them to ride well, too. Absolutely, I think that's a great point.
Board and get off again.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, I'll add that one.
I should add ride to that one.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Anything else on that one? So with that, with that change, we'll have a motion. Ms. Badger.
I move that we approve the bus monitor category-two paraeducator.
And Ms. Hunt is the second. Is there a question to it?
Hold on one second, I, I just have to get my electronic school board where I need to get it. Okay, Mrs. Badger? Motion?
Again?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
It looks like that's unanimous. On the science paraeducator, anything they had, Ms. Frye?
The only pieces to note are we've added things like computer proficiency skills, and this individual that is in this position works very closely with the kids and their science projects. So we've had to change a lot of things, but she does a fantastic job, so we
Okay, any questions from committee members? Ms. Burgess moves it, seconded by Mr. Bagley. Question? All right, we'll vote it. Okay, and the next one is the certified occupational therapeutic assistant.
Yes, these enter the category-four areas, which are very specialized services. We have a number of codas throughout the district with our students with specific needs. We have, in the rewriting of the descriptions, we've kept a very consistent model and consistent language with what you've already approved. The language on qualifications, we made the change that Ms. Badger brought up earlier, the sense of humor line and the consistent job goals. So we, we really worked at keeping it consistent. But this, there's a lot to it, but the position, they work directly under the occupational therapist, so.
Okay, is there a motion or a question?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Bagley moves it, seconded by Mrs. Burgess. Any question on the motion? That's good. CNA paraeducator. Anyone to add?
Just that these individuals work under the school nurse, and they are always at the direction of the school nurse, and the school nurse is still the liaison on any medications and things of that nature. But we put in, I worked with Mrs. Rains on putting in different Department of Public Health requirements and mandates and things like that for a lot of our medically fragile students and things of that nature, so.
Okay, any questions from committee members? No questions, we'll take a motion. Mr. Morgan moves it, seconded by Mr. Bagley. Questions? All right, time to vote. Okay, that's unanimous. The job coach.
Yes, this was important to get into place, because these individuals, their driver's license is important, and the appropriate qualifications that need to be in place, and they go out into the job site with our project growth kids primarily. So there's a lot of different details, and they work as a team, but they primarily work for us, but they are the communicator with the outside placement, so.
Okay. Ms. Burgess moves it. Is there, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Bagley. Dr. Mises?
My computer is, was locked up, so, Mrs. Burgess?
Ms. Burgess moved it, Mr. Bagley seconded it.
Thank you.
Any questions from committee members? Okay, time to vote. Did you get that one? Okay, next one is the
Yes, the next, this is similar to the Coda position, the assistant to the occupational therapist. This is the assistant to the physical therapist. So again, this is a very physical job and working with the, the children on their specific needs, and they have, you know, it all really depends on the, the particular child and what they have. But we have a number of these throughout the district, but again, similar to the nursing assistant, the occupational assistant there, the assistant to the PT in the buildings.
I'll move it.
We have a motion by Mr. Bagley, seconded by Ms., Ms. Badger, and on a question, I am trying to find the question that I had on this one. It was a, well, I can't find it right now, so I'm gonna pass by it then. Okay, we'll take, we'll take the vote. That's unanimous. Okay, the RBT.
Yes, this is two titles in the contract, and I feel like I speak in acronyms, so I apologize, but there are RBTs and ABAs, and they work in conjunction with BCBA. So just to summarize a little bit, the BCA BA is the real high-level behaviorist who comes in to work with some of our students and in teams and with our, in our team meetings, but the, the registered behavior technician or the applied behavior analyst, they're people who really track data on the students and their particular needs, especially in our programs. Most of these individuals work within the programs that exist in our schools. They are almost identical positions, and I've worked closely with Dr. Rogers on this, but it's a different licenser test. But it really is all about behavior, whether it's an applied behavior or a registered behavior technician. So we decided to put it as one, but depending on RBT or ABA, it truly is just a certificate that my office manages. It's not a Department of Education certificate, but it's something that, it's a board, it's a board-certified position, so. And again, it is a paraeducator position, and the professional and the go-to is the BCBA on these that we contract with.
Any questions? Motions? Ms. Badger?
I move we approve the job description as presented.
Mr. Bagley is the second. Any questions on the motion? Okay, time to vote. That's great, and now the speech and language pathology assistant.
Yes, this is similar to the, the Coda and the PTA, that this, Mrs. DeRosa, who's our Assistant Director of Special Education, she is a speech and language person, so she supervises the speech and language pathologists, and these people are their go-to people that are in place to kind of do the, they're in the trenches with the kids and specific needs. When the speech and language person is tied up with testing, they're really with the kids in the, the classroom. So these exist primarily at the elementary schools.
Any questions? Okay, no question, take the motion. Mrs. Burgess moves it, seconded by Mr. Bagley. Any questions? Okay. As they say in town meeting, get out your clicker.
And I think we just have about four left of paraeducators. That'll be four more in January of paraeducators, and we'll be on to teachers.
That's unanimous.
They make fun of me, walking by me with job descriptions, like central office friends.
Well, hey, we're getting them done, right?
Getting them done.
Okay, the next item is mid-cycle on the, on the superintendent's goals.
Yes, Dr. Sorensen, we have two items tonight. Actually, my goals, I'm presenting them to you for a second time, because there was a desire by the committee for me to add a goal relative to the audit that we had last year and measurable goals for our schools. So what I did is I added the new goal at the beginning of the document, and I did that so that I didn't have to go through all the other ones. But what I did with the other goals is I actually included mid-cycle or a December update on where I am with those particular goals. So if I could, I will just run through the, the first goal, which is the new one, and I'll, I'll just read it, so you can have a good sense of what, what it is. Included within the 2016-17 Massachusetts Department of Education and Secondary Education Comprehensive District Review highlighted that the school improvement plans do not consistently include measurable benchmarks based on student achievement data. Consequently, all new school improvement plans will contain measurable benchmarks that are based on student achievement. Schooling plans currently at mid-cycle will reflect these benchmarks upon renewal. So what we're doing right now is I have had the opportunity to meet with our, our principals. We've had conversations regarding measurable goals and how school improvement plans have benchmarked goals that are relative to student, student achievement and student performance. So we are working with our principals and our coordinators. I have had conversations with our coordinators to be able to work with our principals to set very clear and understandable goals that are really promoted through school council. So the school council goals, school improvement plan goals, and also how does that align with the performance goals for every single principal in the district? So there's a level of adjustment and understanding from what this goal is, my goal, to what the principal's goal is and are, and also what the school improvement plan goals and how that's aligned all the way through, from how it starts here with, with the school[1772.28] how that's aligned all the way through, from how it starts here with the school district and my goal, what it means to the principal and their performance, and also what it means to the school improvement plan and the school council's involvement with understanding what that is. So we have had several meetings regarding that. We actually had meetings with our administrators to actually work with our coordinators to really break down the data and really understand what that data looks like. And I will tell you from this point on, when our principals present to you their school improvement plans, you will start to hear language that is consistent with what we've discussed tonight around how they're working towards identifying what those benchmarks are, how they're doing it, and what they mean for student performance in every school. So this is a goal that I think is extremely meaningful to our principals, and actually I think it'll drive the discussion at our school councils. So this is an add for the goals from the last time that I presented them to you. So as I, you know, had mentioned during my overview of this goal, we have been working on this. So this is something that the principals are aware of. We actually brought it up right after the audit, and we discussed it at our retreat that we had this summer with our principals, directors, and coordinators. And also, even as, that's latest, last Friday, we discussed it with our administrators. So we are working at this collaboratively, and I think it's an excellent opportunity for our coordinators to work directly with our principals on alignment of curriculum, also alignment of initiatives that have really strong benchmark points for each school. So that's something that we're working on. So that's an add to my goals, and I know that's something that the committee wanted me to take a look at and then bring it back to the table. So that's the one goal that I did add in reference to the conversation we had had the last time that I presented my goals.
Before we go, you want to finish the additions on three and four and five?
Yes, so if we take a look at Goal Statement Three, I did add, as measured by, and that's really the documentation of lesson plans for each opportunity. So I'm actually creating an archive of lessons that I teach in the class, and I'll share that with the committee so you can actually see what teachers are preparing, and it's samples of what teachers actually do every day. So what I'm doing is I don't want teachers to go out and create all-new lessons for me just for me to come in the classroom. I want a continuum of what they're doing so that I can see exactly where they are. So I do have a binder that I'm collecting lesson plans, and I will actually include that. That's another tangible piece that I thought would be important for this. And then after reviewing Goal Statement Four, I added three more as measured by, and that's identification of quantity of surveys completed, and that's our students have all, students who have not opted out of taking the survey have all taken the pre-venture survey. And that is all of, it is probably about 95% of our eighth-grade student population. And I'll get their scores back in the next couple of days, and right after the holidays, students will start working on the opportunity to get training in pre-venture. Of course, we'll do a parent, we'll do a parent meeting before that to give parents information, but that is moving forward. And then identification of quantity of students involved in the intervention classes. So we have two different opportunities. We have students that were surveyed to actually find out their personality traits, and then based on that, we will then get permission for selected students to actually work with the trainers. So that'll be about 40% of our eighth-grade student population. So you'll actually get a number of what that is by school and by trait when I bring that information to you. And then we'll do an exit survey of students when they get done, and I kind of want to get their impressions on how they felt during the process, and if they feel that they have tools that are going to help them to be more successful when dealing with difficult situations. So we'll do an exit with those students. And then the last goal was Goal Statement Five, and that's community engagement. And what I want to be able to do is identify upgrades and changes to the new website. So you'll have a listing of all the different upgrades that we've made. So you'll kind of see the quantity of changes that we made and what it actually means to the district, and our parents can get information differently. So not only will you get the timelines and so on, but you'll actually have a listing of everything that's changed and where you can possibly find more information for the district. So those are things that I added that were a little bit more measurable in the sense that you could get more information on what's happening with my goals.
Mr. Bagley?
I just wanted to support you on the school improvement plans, already seeing the impact of you doing this, because when we go to the Plymouth South High School Council, and Jim Hannah has already has very detailed discussions about this, and I'm driving back, so it should be reassuring to everybody that it's already getting out on the streets, and they're, and they're working hard towards it, so, well done.
Well, and I think the principals are engaged. It's engaging when it's, when it's part of the evaluation.
There is that, yeah.
Well, it happens here, it happens there. So I think that's part of the whole premise of...
We've had that in the past. That element's always there, really, and it just seems there being, there's a, there's a very creative attempt to move it forward and make the school improvement plans more productive.
Well, I think it's compounded when you have a independent audit that identifies some specific areas that need improvement. So I think it really helped for us to go through the process.
Any questions? If not, this is an item for action. Mr. Bagley?
I'll make the motion to accept the changes that Dr. Maestis has set forth.
And Mrs. Burgess is the second to that. Actually, you're making a motion to accept the changes. I believe the motion has to accept the goals, because we never really accepted them last time.
Accept the goals.
With the changes.
With the addition, with the changes that we asked for.
Okay. That's the motion, that's the second? Any questions? Okay. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, reports from committee members, committee members that have any reports. Ms. Mont?
Okay, I have two things. I think I mentioned at the last meeting that Shishikahama has contacted me asking for a head count, and I put a message out to the families that went last year, and we had quite a good response for host families this summer. And they actually just sent us another email just the other day confirming the number of students. I think we told them 15 was a reasonable number, but we could work with it if they had other, either up or down. They've had 18, I think, already applying, and they're going to start interviews this week. That's a first thing. And then the second item is, I think I also mentioned that I offered up our school for a mask division meeting, and the date has been set, so if you want to mark your calendars, it's March 15th. It's a Thursday at 6:00, and it's going to be at Plymouth South High School. It's going to be the MASC Division III meeting. Light but substantial meal will be served. MASC is providing that via our Culinary Arts Department. And I believe they might have a guest speaker that's a resource officer, and so that should be interesting because the conversation might go around that. So if that interests you and can convince you to go even more, that would be great.
Ms. Badger?
We had a PAC meeting, and I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that the Pilgrimage Collaborative, they have produced their 2017 annual collaborative report, which I gave to Dr. Maestis. So if anybody wants to see it, Dr. Maestis has it. I also have it electronically if anybody would like it. Their, Maureen, the executive director, has announced her retirement, and so we're in the process of, just starting the process of looking for a replacement for their executive director. She's not retiring until next November, so it gives plenty of time for the board to figure that out. And due to some changes in the organization and the board, the members, we had a couple board members leave and a couple new join our committee, so we had to do a reorganization. And I'm now their vice chair, basically on, because there's only like four or five people who have ever been on the committee before, so... So it should be exciting. We'll see what that means, I have no idea. But we're excited to kind of find a place for a replacement for Maureen. Obviously, it will be a sad loss for her.
She's wonderful.
She's amazing. We're really lucky to have her. But that's it.
Other committee members with reports?
No, I've just have gone to some schools, but it's no big deal.
PYD, PYDC? PYDZ?
PYDC, okay. PYDC, I have trouble taking notes. I didn't get a seat at the table, so there was no place to write. So, but anyway, Gary was the one that introduced everybody and ran the meeting, so we have the folks here that know. But anyway, there's a new DFC coordinator, her name is Kelly Makomber, and you said she's beginning when?
January 2nd.
January 2nd, so we will have a new person. They were talking about, oh, they had a woman there from the state of Massachusetts that deals with the deaf community, and she was, she spoke about opioid addiction among the deaf community, and, yeah, it was very interesting. And I think she's interested in coming more, too. Yeah, I think she's almost desperate, if you know what I mean, because I don't think there's a lot of...
Resources.
Resources for her, yes. So I think this is probably going to be a good one. Plymouth Pediatrics, I don't remember, do you?
Yeah, there was a discussion relative to supports for families that are dealing with, you know, behavioral issues, and there was an opportunity for the organization that was present, based out of Plymouth Pediatrics, to really support families that really had students in crisis or children in crisis, and they have deployed a new operational model here in Plymouth.
And it says Children's Hospital, a woman from Children's Hospital was there.
Yes, and they are based out of Children's Hospital. So it's a new resource for Plymouth. We're going to put the contact information of this individual and also the individual who Marjorie talked about previously on the PYDC website, so any community member can actually go on to the website and actually, you know, confidentially look these names up and actually use the mass resources.
And then Marielle Paul spoke, but if you want to just summarize what she had to say, she's feeling new. We met her...
She is.
I met her in the, she was in the fall, she was, she came, didn't she?
Yeah, I think we're very fortunate that we're seeing a number of coalitions that are popping up in the area, and Marielle's role is a collaborative approach to the substance abuse prevention coalition, so PYDC, Carver Cares, Middleborough Matters. So she represents all three communities, and she talked about some of the work that her coalition is doing, in particular, the time that she spent with our high school students, and she's had the opportunity to go into both high schools and work with all health classes, to talk about substance use, abuse prevention, education. So just another resource for us, she's a wonderful resource, and she works, she's very familiar with Ms. Makomber, which Mrs. Burgess spoke of, who will be coming on to PYDC, too, who comes from the Brockton Coalition. So we're very fortunate that our network is expanding in that regard.
And then we had Healthy Plymouth and the Tomato Sauce Initiative. I think you probably saw it on the, this letter that comes out every week. But Judy Vigna, who's been a very, 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 how do I say it? She's been almost effervescent in her, as a parent, but she's volunteered for about three years now. But anyway, it was her last day, she's going to go about getting herself a decent job, I guess. And, but anyhow, it'll be sad to lose her, and everybody was acknowledging her, but she was talking about the Tomato Sauce Initiative and how they got the tomatoes from all the schools and, you know, had made the sauce, and all the schools had spaghetti sauce one day. So anyhow, that was mainly what she was talking about. Anything you want to add, or?
No, just that that work came from the community gardens that Healthy Plymouth and PYDC. So just really seeing it all come full circle from, you know, planting the seeds to the nurturing of the gardens and getting the community involved. So it's, again, it's not about the sauce, it's about connecting the community, so it was a good, a good project.
And I think the South Shore Sustainable Plymouth that I'm on, I think they're also very interested in this Healthy Plymouth thing. So at some point, they're going to involve, involve us with it. They only meet four times a year, so anyway, that's it.
Dr. Maestis?
Just to follow up on what Mrs. Burgess said on Judy Vigna, she actually received two citations from the State House. Matt Miratore presented her with the citation, and also Matt Miratore from the Senate. And it's significant to have a volunteer who performs at the high level that Judy does. You know, you talk about Healthy Plymouth, that was a program that Judy was, was so key in facilitating and making things happen, working with the hospital, helping the school district. You remember when we had the, and we have the job fair? That was Judy. Judy created that and really pushed and pushed, and now we have a job fair that kids can go to and get internships, get jobs. And it's, it's rare that you find an individual that is selfless, that just does things for kids. That's, that's her motivation, is to try to get programming for kids. And she, she's just an incredible human being, so just grateful that she was able to work with us for three years. We're kind of panicked now because she is just so involved that it's going to take a few people to get what she would do for us. So I just had to mention that.
Yeah, that's good. And then Trina Camaro was Child and Behavioral Health, and could you speak on that? Yeah, you?
Yes, me.
I thought you were going to pass it off.
I'm trying to refer the notes. I don't have my notes from Ms. Camaro's conversation, but she's essentially is trying to expand that subcommittee to make sure that we have representatives from all over the community that can support both the behavioral and emotional health needs that that subcommittee is looking at for PYDC. So it's, I looked, I looked this way, Mrs. Burgess, to see if Dr. Maestis could refresh my memory on some things, but essentially, it was about, it was about that. It was a very, it was a brief report, but the work is really important. She continues to look for additional members of that subcommittee.
It's, I'll tell you, PYDC, if any of you are around on Friday when we have the meeting, it is the most well-attended, most engaging meeting that I go to.
They're going to, you're a bro in that.
It's an unbelievable opportunity, and it's really engaging to help with youth issues that we see in our community. It's unbelievable, and...
The police chief is there, the district attorney, people from the sheriff's department, this, the, the... The churches, the... Wait a minute now.
We have essentially 12 sectors that are represented.
It's huge. It's just, it's huge, and who goes to that? And the only thing is that some of us, you know, we're getting all the information, and we know what's going on and things like that, but what can we do?
Right, and now that...
That is the issue now. Now we're all sitting there, what can we do?
Right, so we have a lot of people who have a lot of influence within the community and can help get the word out, and I feel really hopeful with Kelly coming on board as the coordinator for the Drug-Free Community Grant and working full-time within our community that should be able to get that general membership up. So the people who can't go to a meeting, as Dr. Maestis said, at a Friday at 8:00, will be happy to come on a Saturday and volunteer to work on an initiative. So that's the piece that we're really excited about, which will be coming soon.
And then the last item was the preventive, which you spoke to actually already about the survey and everything, so I guess we're all set on that.
Okay, thanks for that report, but you're still on, Ms. Burgess, now you have the building committee.
Yeah, you didn't get to the meeting.
I did not.
That's okay. No, that's not the right agenda. Here it is. Okay, building committee. Plymouth South High School is, the old building is now 100% demolished. It's complete, and the road is up. They're going to put another surface on it later, though, but for the winter, anyway. It's usable, and that's the way we're going. They've also begun drilling for the ball... They've also begun drilling for the ball field lighting, irrigation, and drainage for the ball field, too. And so that's coming along. The punch list now for what's got to be done still is about 95% complete. And it should be finished by school vacation, they said, yep. And on the new town hall, they said it was 99% complete. They, they have some issues. They're having issues with the lighting when you're in a meeting, all of a sudden it goes off. It's the same, it's that motion sensor moving, everybody's sitting at the meeting and they walk. So they had, it was sending somebody to walk around. But anyway, that didn't work. So they, they have some problems that somebody's coming in to repair and fix. Also, they have to modulate the fresh, fresh air intake and the historic stair still has not been opened. They're waiting for a railing for it, so I guess they have to put a railing on the other side. So anyhow, there's other little things, but that's the main part of the town hall. And then the Sims House is 99.9% done. They just have to do some front foyer tiles. The salt shed in Cedarville is going out to bid again in January. They only had one person, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't good, so they're redoing it. The Russell Street parking deck now, they've got it down to four and a half million. They're going to put it back out to bid as well. The North Plymouth Fire Station, it's being modeled after the Pine Hill Station and Palmeroy, Palmeroy Associates is the onus project manager on that one. Okay, and Maritime Facility, it's coming up in Springtown Meeting. It's going to be three to four million, but they've only got half the grants. They need two more grants, so they're working on that. Lincoln Street Building is going to go to Springtown Meeting. And the Main Street Extension Parking Garage is, has been given to architects, the Dirkie, Dirkie Brown, the one that was there, and Desmond, the one that did the town hall, is doing the parking garage, along with Desmond. And that's it.
Any questions?
Anybody, yeah. I saw...
Yeah, I have the same question.
You referenced Lincoln Street going to town meeting, what's that about?
Because the selectmen have it now.
Okay.
And what I understand is happening is it's a painting facility now. They're painting things for the town that they're putting out signs.
Like the sign shop?
Yeah. And it's locked up most of the time, but it's a sign shop and, yeah, they're sort of utilizing it kind of funny way, but whatever. There's no meetings being held there, there's nothing, just...
Does it have storage there?
In the town, town meeting decides?
Well, there's some leftover things in there, I think. But beyond that, there isn't much in there now. And, I mean, I didn't actually go in it now, I'm just going by what they're reporting, but somebody was saying that they were using it as a paint shop to do signs and things. I think for the DPW.
For the interviews and space?
All right. Well, thank you. Both reports. We have Sola back on the agenda because of the project at South. So Mr. Costin, you're on.
Thank you. We, the committee comprised of myself, Bob Patterson, our consultant, and Arthur Montron reviewed the three proposals. We have selected Amoresco as the most advantageous proposal for the, for the school district and for this project. Currently, we are, we've had a number of conference calls and we're working with all parties on, working on the economics of this project and negotiating what the PPA would look like. So we're currently really going back and forth and reviewing all the economics and we'll keep you apprised of where we are in this project.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Costin on that? All right, thank you. Personnel.
Yes, we've had one certificated appointment, 11 coach and advisor appointments, seven classified appointments, three maternity leaves, and seven resignations.
Okay, any questions? Anybody? Okay, warrants? Miss Hunt?
I'm behind. Whereas the school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the, sorry, and the warrant, and the Accounts Payable Warrant Number S122117 dated December 21st, 2017, in the amount of $1,356,087.14 as presented.
Is there a second? Ms. Badger's the second? Is there a question? All right, time to vote. And now we have some minutes. We'll start with October the 16th.
I'll move the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion. Second of Ms. Burgess. Question, Ms. Badger?
Nope, sorry, I have...
No question? Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll take the vote on the 16th, please. All right, and now November the 6th.
I'll move the minutes for November 6th.
Thank you very much. Second of Ms. Burgess. Any question? Okay, we'll take the vote on November the 6th. I voted abstained, okay, sure. All right, that's good, thank you. November the 20th.
There are no minutes.
Oh, that's right, they were not there, thank you. November the 20th, Dr. Miestis.
Yeah, just to speak to November 20th minutes, one of the things that we've realized is the, one of the meetings that we have, some of the meetings that we've had, we've had issues with electronic school board. So this is one of the reasons why there's a delay in getting this, these minutes up. So it was, it's a lot more cumbersome when it's not operating, so we had to go back and watch the video and make sure we had to recreate everything. So one of the things that we've discussed in my office is the possibility of make, of maybe using Chromebooks at the school committee table, that maybe that's something that we could do for consistency. But I know we've had some issues with iPads and not pulling up PDFs and things of that nature, so we're behind the scenes trying to figure out a consistent way for the committee to actually be able to synchronously move through the agenda and view documents. So we are considering what we can do and I know it's, we'll have to see how it all works because I know we've had some issues with iPad and so on, but just to let you know that the reason why we don't have the minutes for tonight, for this particular date, is because we've had issues with electronic school board. They seem to be worked out since the last meeting.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, so then we're going to move to minutes of the 28th of November. Is there a motion to approve them?
I'm moving.
Burgess moves it. Mr. Begley is the second. Is there a question on the 28th of November minutes? Okay, then we'll vote. Okay, we have two abstentions. Everybody else voting in favor? Okay, thank you on the minutes. We have a piece of machinery and I think some books on obsolete equipment.
Yes, tonight we have two items for disposal. We have Plymouth North High School, it identifies as equipment, but it's actually gym floor cleaner. It's a gym floor cleaner that is in, because brought over from the old school and it's just out of service and it's just been hanging around north and they brought it over from Old North to New North and it really needs to be discarded.
Is there a motion to discard that?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Second of Ms. Badger, question on that? Okay, please vote. Okay, and I think it was books.
Yes, we have out-of-date pre-algebra textbooks, about 50 from each school, PCIS and Plymouth South Middle School. They were published in 2005 and they will be donated to Big Hearted Books and these are just out of print. So they're for, they're going to be discarded, but then donated to Big Hearted Books.
Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the disposal or donation of the books.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt is the second. Is there a question? Okay, we'll vote. Is there any other business to come before the committee? Seeing no hands, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas and good media to everybody. Good sir.